CBI, Bo and City Fire and City and the credit board or something like that.
Looks like I'm thirty-two seven one.
That was fifty-three annualized, that's not a real number.
No, it's concerned.
It's not a annualized, I'm not sure if it is, I'm not gonna ask if it's not gonna be helpful for you, it's just helpful for me. So, it wasn't, uh, I mean, just, oh, oh, you're giving everyone the reason why this is giving you all this information that you want. I'm ready. So, I mean, uh, to allocate it just a little bit because I don't, what do you, so I have eleven for current, two thousand eleven, so two thousand eleven to current, I do use the whole idea when I'm doing a budget together, but for the more practical purposes, um, you don't need that.
Well, it was helpful back in twenty-eleven, I'd say we spent twenty-three thousand dollars in legal back then, now we're spending almost seven of them this year.
Well, two years ago, we spent sixty-two. No. Yes, I, I can, but it's quite different than our usual needs now that there was this town. Yeah. So, you can see, um, not only are there a lot, like, they get in here and you're seeing or using views to give you the numbers, but it also goes down to the point of who will claim what in that category and how much over the years that we have paid them. Yep. So, we have contact with Bo for next year for fifty thousand, we have a lesson for twenty-five hundred, we have sort of, uh, set size, uh, hundred and twenty for CBI and seventy-five for finance, I guess is the total in that category that we're budgeting fifty-two thousand seven fifteen. A year to fifty thousand eighty, um, which were budgeted for last year, we're already at four thirty-four, and, um, now eighteen and nineteen was sixty-nine nine on fifteen hundred.
Okay, it feels like this is an Excel spreadsheet, is it possible for us to get a copy of that spreadsheet?
No.
Okay, is that legal in the description or?
Not spreadsheet, because I can't walk it.
What about, uh, like a password protected copy?
I can't, neither did I, except for one.
Well, looking at nothing, I know not everyone wants that level of detail, but I think it's extremely helpful to be able to take the numbers, I'm trying to make a little graph and charts and things like that, it just helps me digest it a little bit more easily. And rather than asking for staff time to create something that I may be the only person that looks at, if we could get a protective version of the spreadsheet, so I'm not changing any numbers, but I can manipulate them and look at them in different ways, does that make sense?
Yeah. George, show the files where I need to be, George, George.
Are there any questions?
Let's, uh, let's pull down the bottom line, down there, see what I'm hearing here. Well, system's not accurate, we have a problem, but God in the world, we really have this thing, I have a problem, something happened in my spreadsheet since I printed it, and it's not, does not say what it said when I gave it to you, so you can't look at this one, this particular one is not currently accurate, I'm not sure what happened. It was zero, it will be in zero again.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what hap, I, I, and I can't, I can switch to a different, but I'm presenting both the. It's a form of law, and if something happened, then I don't know what happened, and I can't fix it at this particular moment, so let's just ask questions about the line behind them, and then we'll get to the totals after, a lot of this stuff's gonna change between now and then, so if you guys can, look at the data for giving me direction rather than the hard, the hard hard numbers, let's put it that way, it's still very fluid, I don't have the data from the county, I don't, I, I still am working on getting a lot of data, so this is close, but again, I have a problem, and I have to go back and figure out what happened.
So then, that was fifty. Well, so, um, kind of like, uh, kind of, uh, selling a little bit of figures because we've been smiling quite a bit, like we saw on three years' budget.
Five years.
And also prior to two thousand ten, eighteen, the building official's tax number, now contracted. Yep.
I'm just wondering, um, what's happened with the sales tax that's allocated to the link over the last few years, it looks like we went from twenty-eight thousand in twenty-nineteen to no sales tax going toward billing in twenty-twenty, and then a small amount back in twenty-twenty-one.
And so there will be, um, sales tax going to, as a necessity, uh, there will be sales tax going to, um, in twenty-twenty, it's just not calculated yet, because they won't know it'll get calculated until the end of the year, um, that helps, whatever works short is what's gonna go to, um, is what's gonna get pulled from sales tax. Okay, um, last year, we instructed not to budget, um, the sales tax in there, and so, um, for, uh, building, um, and so, if, if, whatever, um, we need to do without is what comes from those, and I don't have that, I can tell you when you'll get this time, for about forty-six hundred dollars, not short.
Okay, um, so that sales tax that we used to do without, that's not sales tax that's been allocated to something else for twenty-twenty, that's just, we're reallocating from something else.
Or the tax we're reallocating from somehow.
Okay.
Or, and have to sort of, most ways we had sales tax, but we didn't, like, because our sales tax is up by two, three, six percent, if I remember correctly. Bill.
I'm, I'm glad, right, last year in the budgeting process, there were the shortage in, uh, general, uh, budget for the building code, for the building, and there was left of a staff to increase rates and whatnot, uh, in the building charges, did that ever happen?
It was, it was, the direction was to investigate them, and which one started as government at every level, but then that, I mean, all of those started derailed when we were remote meeting and only focused on the essential things that need to be addressed at the board level, so it has to be done through a resolution, um, the, uh, from all of our peace director, it was something we might do, can or, I think that's not a problem.
Well, it seems a little unfair, uh, people that are driving their building, uh, from charges, don't pay the full price, and other people have to pick up the, the bill, and so, I think those charges need to be investigated and probably be increased.
And I, I would say that I think that I do think that fees and the structure for building department as a whole is one of the things that, um, I mean, reviewing and our, one of the questions we need to go at topics to, to building department as well.
We're gonna have a big discussion about it tonight. I have a question, um, so building inspector for eighteen was forty-eight and change, for nineteen was forty-five and change, who was budgeted in twenty-one and five this year? So what is the reasoning behind having that in camp?
You're not fishing in a building for this, when you don't give water tax.
Okay, but still, he does lots of.
Right now, our actual was twenty thousand one ninety-two.
Uh-huh.
Uh, annualized now, for what actually, actual, so. We can update it, but the, the.
Well, I'm also looking at, so we should have our water asset inventory done in the beginning of next year, and that may negate the water tax moratorium, at which point we would then be able to allow more billing to occur, which means we would need a building inspector more. So, I think my opinion is, I think we really need to up that. And then too, we do need to look at a key structure that supports that, and whether we stay with car, or a consultant, or whatever, but I think it's probably too low.
Okay, what would you rate this unit?
Yeah, I think about thirty.
Well, it was showing, um, well, it may be more than mine now, but I noticed the same thing, that the building inspector was budgeted low, uh, but at the same time, we went up quite a bit on the payroll line, um, and it seemed to me that those be tied together, if there's more happening on inspections, there should be more payroll going to the building fund, um, so, but it is probably more than mine, if we're bringing up the inspector , there needs to be payroll where it does, I don't know, sorry.
Okay, done. Anything else, and building?
I have a question, but here, uh, so, uh, what's the insurance that we're paying in this, uh, fund, uh, my assumption was that since we're consulting, since our building inspector is a consultant, that they would be.
It's very, um, and Corinne does, yeah, cover Corinne for all buildings, uh, that's just payroll.
Okay, associated.
Corinne, uh, she does fence lines, she does some of the reviews, she does all the building.
Okay.
So, that's what, that payroll, he is, is for Corinne, Clark, and, and Amanda, and, um, and mine also for, I think, you know, it was found that was so small, and then, um, but you sell chair, and, and work, um, I'll be, there were pumpings on, but internal employees are doing, doing the function.
Makes sense, thank you. Um, and then, what subscriptions do we have related to the building fund?
Uh, it's, uh, thirty-five, uh, a hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's a hundred and thirty-five dollars for the international code council, which is a advisory, uh, subscription, and eight hundred dollars for your code books, once, uh, the in, code gets passed, well, that was originally scheduled for this year, and it didn't happen, so it's very slow.
Okay, and, um, sorry, just for the international code council, who, who gets advice from them, how do we?
It belongs to the town, it's our membership, so we can, we can leave information and get advice, it is a town initiative.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, to the evening. We don't have any on here tonight, and there's a question, so, let's do the best we can.
But the school district cut the amount of money you're paying for the school and social officer.
I'm sorry?
No, my first question is here. Yeah, the school and social officer, the school district cut funding for that. They need us ten thousand dollars for that position through the end of December, whether they will go ahead and turn it for the following year is debatable, Tiffany, or Catherine, who is the officer, knows that she is funded through the end of the year, and if they cut that funding, then we'll probably either find funds to reallocate her, or she will lose her job.
So, I wanna make sure I should go ahead, the school district cut the funding from twenty percent?
Yes.
No, no, they, they did, they did, we, while we're putting the full twenty thousand for a school year, but their school year is happening, one part of the year is happening, so we did get the full twenty thousand out of town for the school.
Yes.
No, you, you know, um, can go include additional officers in, uh, if there are any marijuana funds, and there are more, uh, that, that.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
You had me to go back to bed, you had me to go, the officer, and you had me to go, and I never got the mail, and I'm leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, um, the, hey, the public safety, it was, it's like, to me, this has increased about forty-five percent from twenty-eighteen, and I'm just wondering, I mean, I know we've added staff, I believe we've added staff, um, but do we have any statistics on, um, number of calls, uh, timing of response?
We won't have that available, and I just don't have.
Okay. I think that would just help you.
A lot of the same, your comment, you've lost about forty-five percent, either because of what?
Any of the years, over two years, our public safety budget has increased about forty-five percent, um, if I'm reading, okay. And I, I just feel like it would be easier for us to justify that type of increase to the public, if we've got some information on how our, uh, our, if we stop making people how call times may have decreased, how many individuals are responding to, things like that, maybe even if you could get some of that information on the website.
I can tell you from what little I know, is that the bad crimes are increasing, the little crimes, they don't have time for.
Yes, I would concur with that, poll volume has been up significantly since the summer, and so this, the officers have been scrambling, and then we had one officer down, and so that made it even worse, and yet, some of the serious stuff like domestic violence, sexual assault, and that kind of stuff is up significantly, though what it was this time last year.
Is there next to the problem?
Problem. At least in Florida.
And I wanna be clear, I'm not saying I don't think it's a justification, I understand that we have needs for the town, but I just think there are ways we can communicate it more clearly to the public, to make sure everybody's on board with where we're at, and understands why we're here.
And there has been increases, you talked about staff, and things like that, there was a critical, um, point in two thousand fifteen where, um, the police department was reduced by one and a half of their staff, um, and then there were layoffs, and then slowly, um, their numbers have been, the officers have been brought back on, so there are, there have been significant changes in the last six years. Good.
Well, this has been terrible, that's because of the passes, um, we helped the company prepare this year well, so things proved, maybe they were increases, and we're, we're stuck on that, and we can use some specs somewhere else, just a caution.
Senator President, uh, TV? Yeah, Bill. If he granted that, that's hot, uh, the forty-five hundred, exactly for, um, yes, not, yeah, uh. It's something that gets paid for the, if you turn around, it pays for the, uh, the immersive, we're bringing our sweat off, we get the immersive training, so they offset each other. I put those under deal, deal.
And then those, uh, total bill of the office or something, the salary range.
That is, uh, all the officers are budgeted past the, we can, that he gave to the other day.
Hmm.
Senator President, TV? Okay, so I want to do first, so, um, five seven, and let me know if these please, let's say it might as well not exist, because, um, we're down, um, significantly from previous years, um, so we did in nineteen, we got ten thousand, this year we've gotten, uh, forty-seven hundred. I budgeted five for next year, um, and the no listing, that's the same, we have sixty-five in nineteen, we have six in eighteen, and we're down to thirty-nine. So, the only thing to make up those losses is sales tax, so like, flyers, um, and then there are, there is a couple, um, projects being requested, um, ten thousand for tree trimming, forty thousand for new bathrooms, overland playground, playground and shelter, finish the top and, um, apple valley, and then we start several things, and we start including spending for fifty-two thousand, that is a total of a hundred and twenty-three, hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred, and we are short, um, hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred, um, so, either we need to find funding for these projects, or we need to cut these projects. And so there is some things, again, these are things that we talked about, these are items that we'd like to see happen, we want our funds to be able to do, and start, um, as we are working forward, and we get our capital, and moving plans, um, from SGM, these are things that we'd like to start seeing, um, adding in there, and so, there are money items in the dollar amount, so we can see what we're up against in some of the things that we're talking about, but we are very aware that they're not, unless they're going to be funded for some time.
And can you, uh, list your CapEx projects again?
Uh, tree trimming, bathroom, shelter, finish for captain, apple valley, and the, um, sprinklers, irrigation sprinklers, coating, and sentencing after these programs.
So, bathrooms, are there, is that literally the thing, the current actions over at town park, or putting another management of like, like?
Uh, this, this forty thousand is for the new bathrooms, you know, that one, that one right in the middle, one right in the middle, two bathrooms, which are, it's high grade, but that is not the way you were talking about maybe tearing them down, starting all that.
So, what kind of thinking are you looking at in these parks that would cost fifty-two thousand?
That's, steel's living up there, it's, um, kinda like, in the, like, over at the, um, town park, the two rails, they're, they're all being sealed, entertainment, like.
Would it be all around the park?
Yeah.
And why, why do you mean that, since the purpose is currently the new, nobody just, it might be by a push, is it?
The biggest purpose of the base is they get people from driving over sprinklers, yeah.
Capital.
And then what is the three thousand for contract services?
That is, um, the, uh, dark horse pool park, and my for two thousand, one of the three boards. And for the tree city USA, we're requiring two dollars per cap, two dollars per person, so, um, that's a portion of the amount that we have to budget every year, we have to spend specific on trees, or, um, coating, moving, planting, uh, to maintain our trees in the area.
I mean, so there is a contract laborer right at the top, right below the workers' comp, but does that mean there's not gonna be like a hybrid contract laborer town taking care of the park, does that mean that the town that, of course, is going to do all of the hard work?
So, when we're looking at two, one was a hybrid, um, potential contractor, and the other was bringing someone on staff who had specific parts and respacing and experience, and that's what we, uh, were able to find through our temporary agency, in which we are evaluating, and would especially then be creating models of some of that staff number. Yep.
So, two questions, um, is that coming at staff member included in the payroll line for twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, the projects that you mentioned, the tree trimming, playground shelter, et cetera, are those all under the capital outlet line?
I'm sorry?
Are those on the capital outlet?
What was that?
All of the projects that you mentioned, tree trimming, and apple valley.
Yeah, I have the capital outlet.
Okay, and.
The hundred and twenty-three five.
Gotcha, so then the current maintenance is also, um, it, it seems like it's fluctuating a lot, you know, but you're, I was wondering if you could talk about that one a little bit?
So, um, in previous years, the project, a lot of the projects, uh, have been done through repairs and maintenance. I've just recently separated the project out and put it under capital outlay instead of putting it under parts and wreck. So it was easier to see. This way you can see how much it costs for just keeping up the works versus, um, so like, uh, tree replacement is in there for, um, next year and acting repairs and maintenance versus capital outlay. So, um, and then five thousand to continue to upgrade, you know, Hampton Center, that and repairs and maintenance and that building. And then come to that state, so we're going to have to throw money, a little bit of money at it each year to get it back to something. I did have a new room. I have a new room. Yeah, the room is beautiful, the rest of it still looks fantastic. So the repairs and maintenance and trying to make more the actual cost of the keeping up the park and then the capital outlay being the project.
Thank you, Matt. Um, what other, um, questions are, are there questions in that building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, actually, if that building upgraded, would that be an alternative to, um, doing the expensive, the very money, others using that?
We have. Right, I was going to, we have to discuss the center, is this that also is a funding mechanism for the things that they do? There's a move-up run that helps Hampton Center for the town. And they use the showers, um, allow hunters, they can come in and they pay a donation to keep. Um, we would have to discuss, um, how we talk about that as well, if they do the majority of the, um, everything. If this day or if we decide to build that route, that forty thousand, then we can just, uh, phrase those down. That is your decision there. So whether you put it into a new build for a, into the whole one or put it into the inside or better. I'm going to say we're going to be talking to the community.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me that it would take that. I'm just thinking that might save us from doubling up by referring two sets of restaurants or pretty close proximity.
This is happening, huh? Any other questions? Nick, streets. And the main thing is true are streets, the capital, um, it, it was actually, and this one is a, uh, single, um, mean, uh, capital improvement mean, and that gives the storm drains to your man, Travis wants to tell us what that is.
Where?
That's the sewer man hole.
Oh, that's on, that's on, um, Third Street. Um, it'll be the, the same repair we did, like nearby the capital church, um, where the manholes are rotting away with oil and it starts to wash out the water and making manholes sink and creating a problem.
Well, let me, this year was an emergency and these are to plan, so we don't, I mean, this will turn into an emergency. Here's what, the next two years probably?
It's part, part of the same.
These reasons, yeah.
We have efficiency as we want to start working towards, especially in particular.
And that, if I understand, we could say that while running along, um, doing it all in one push, rather than having to start, new set piece, reach one and then reacting and, okay, reacting.
Because Mark started to do it as an emergency and I don't want to interrupt him.
Yeah, just, but I know on that, that would be really great to expect that one this year, next year.
And we're short on that one, uh, about, we had about a hundred and eighteen thousand as well.
So we've got, I got the full hundred and twenty-five thousand in the capital outlay?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, I was looking at repairs maintenance line for the general fund streets. And it looks like we've spent far less than we've budgeted in the online. I'm wondering if there's a big project we haven't done, or that's still coming, or that will move into next year.
There are still projects to have, maybe we have two intersections, um, on second and third, on Graham. Yep.
Another question on the utilities, it seem to be significantly less than, uh, what we've spent in the past.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, that's because the street lighting went down. So they need to turn the street lighting?
You say we're saving six or seven thousand dollars a year on the street lights?
Well, I am.
Well, it's, well, uh, this is normally around twenty, and I don't budget for thirteen. We said we would save between a thousand and twelve hundred a month. So it's left costing is almost seventeen hundred, uh, seventeen hundred a month. And now it's down to a little over seven hundred a month.
Also the segment is still removable, you've got quite a bit of lesson there.
Good luck.
Well, you're lost, you're, you're essence. But I mean, it's, it's potentially half of what you spent in two thousand and nineteen, less than spent.
Oh, that includes that Max trailer? And I did cut, we, uh, well contractors, the movers, no, um, you have, I don't know, what's it? But in nineteen, I put the Max trailer and, um, almost nine thousand dollars for a stolen.
But we have the Max trailer, like you said.
What's that? And we did add, uh, two thousand for a sand truck bed, some of these sand truck beds of ours.
Presumably.
Any questions, any further questions on? Yep.
I think, um, it's something that we read on board allocations, because however many streets and however many parks, the industry is probably saying we pay a hundred and eighteen thousand in sales tax included in parks. Where the streets will only put seventy thousand, so there's a question to answer.
Any questions?
Yeah, they want to say that, uh, aren't they sharing a significant amount of budget? We've already had in the bank for street, uh, street work.
No, that's, um, in a different place, that's the street capital one, that you, um, designated for street capital only. So that, this right here was twenty-two on your sheet, which would be the, uh, next page.
Okay, so we'll talk about that in a minute.
And another question, on this one on the table, um, it's a, it's a pretty significant increase in the payroll compared to, um, the twenty twenty budget. I'm wondering if that's an added position that's being voted on.
It's not, well, the, 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 the first time with all the budget in this year as well. Um, but it's, um, the, uh, the, the increase, um, and the, uh, well, I don't really look at that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But it's after allocation.
Okay, so it's.
So I just, the allocation per, uh, this year's actual, I take those ten allocated for, um, next year on this year's actual.
Okay, so does that represent an actual fifty-five percent increase in payroll? Does this represent, um, allocating a lot more of somebody's time to street courses, others?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe there's a, that allocation, uh, that is. As we said it up the last year, um, we got two people that part, um, public works that was doing water and sewer. And that's always for being paid just by one or two. But what we found is that those people are also doing street parts and trash, uh, needed. So, um, we evaluating whether to take all our salaries out of water and sewer and everybody else moving out of street parts and trash or to, um, do everybody buy equipment, their actual, uh, this year. Uh, so this, this budget is with those two people being water and sewer and everybody else being street parts and trash. Uh, I'm still wondering what makes the financials and, and I don't have natural. But it is being valued.
Yeah, you, you play by the rule of thumb, okay, I'm going to do that.
Any other questions on the streets? There was a street capital, so this is for, um, like the intersection, the two intersections, um, which are budgeted into, if that's this year. Then, um, Travis asked for three hundred and twelve thousand to reconstruct two blocks, two blocks of birch trees. Um, and all that hand is going to be why that necessary, but it's over over the camp, over there. Go ahead.
Well, there's been so many overlays on the street that the roads, there's asphalt, it's like almost too thick in the middle. And they're crowded so much that there's not any good ratings. So we need to go in there and re-put base in there, because I don't think it has any base and actually do a street reconstruction. Not just overlaying, drag it back.
And which two streets, which blocks is third and fourth of that?
I think it's start on, it's second grand and work up toward Palmer.
And there's, there's, uh, probably coming in this year as we're anticipating. Then we have about ninety thousand left, plus the board seven thousand, um, in anticipated already in, um, the impact fee. That gave us one hundred and thirty, that project is three twelve, so we're short a hundred and seventy-three. But we'll be able to do, this one reason we have matching funds if we can find a funding source that will fund street reconstruction. Just nine. Part of the byway is going to be private.
So what would be your total left, uh, carrying into next year?
Ninety. Because that's not customer, that's not customer at this moment. I don't have the numbers for the intersections yet. I mean, I have estimates, I don't have, there are seven, so I don't have actually. Any other questions on that?
Just wondering if you could talk about that project. Like I know in fact, there was a big project on the street in intersection third a couple of years ago. I don't know if that was sewer or, or water, because it was like a very large ditch along the south side of third.
Something with water.
Like a trench?
We, we replaced all the water by, from one of those, they're down.
Okay, and so this wouldn't cause any problems at all related to that work that was just done fairly recently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any, like, say, two or one on that?
What's that?
Any of that, uh, like, how, two or one?
No, we, we'd like all the storm sewer, which is like five, we find it in, um, the sewer, I'll be, you see, um, replaced in nineteen thirty-four. I mean, we would have to.
So we're going to do a water, come on, stretch there, all that to do. Okay, the next one is the bridge, the river. And, uh, Travis has asked to, um, resurface the bridge. Estimate fifty thousand, so we just have to three thousand out of the reserves that we have, which is minimal. Our reserves are somewhere around two hundred and thirty-one thousand. What about the doable project? Any questions?
I feel like you answered this and I apologize for asking again, but the, that large bridge reserve, can we relocate it? Is that to our needs for the year or is that getting really messy and moving the resorts around?
Different words that, that drive that differently. Um, the initial board understanding and conversation with the county when the bridge transferred was that it could be used for street, bridge, road repair, or things like that. Um, and that how, there was an allocation from a one point for a specific project. Or shifted, um, administration shifted and it became, no, everything allowed that need to be reserved for the red only, um, which caused some bonding nightmares. And that shift happened, but again, it's. And that shift happened, but again, I think that that would be, probably would want to have a conversation and get updated on how this bonding firm feels about that. And then it's really is tigers on the board's determination of what and how many restrictions were.
And do we have any large bridge projects we're anticipating that we need that reserve? Or is that something that staff would feel comfortable reallocating to maybe the other street projects?
Travis, they will, they may want to replace that bridge with a wider bridge. You're going to correct me when I'm wrong, right?
Well, sorry. I would like to see the bridge wider for vehicles, um, but unable to widen. To widen, you have to take the pedestrian out. So that makes another dangerous situation. So you don't have to work either cannon leaving the pedestrian to the side or, um, taking a pedestrian, making a whole new pedestrian, make the crossbar. Um, cannon leaving over the side, the quote I got was like one point three million dollars. But that was basically resurfacing, um, resealing, green patch bridge. So there's a lot of different options there.
Well, therefore, these could be used as matching funds for that. And we have that expected.
Yeah, it, it is expected every year. Um, the only recommendation they had was the resurfacing, um, of their top asphalt. Um, we did do a compare two years ago with, uh, on a, in the river at the base that we did a repair there, um, which is going very well. Um, and then the rest of the recommendations are just small maintenance, um, but the major ones are the resurfacing of the top.
And those were decided in seventeen, I mean, what's twenty-nine, thirty?
Other than the case, the standing up bridge comes from the projects. Because that bridge, we're a hundred percent responsible for that bridge. There is nobody else who can, who's safe that's going to come in and repair if something happens. So that bridge reserve being there to fix that bridge in case we have an issue.
There's a question, I would tell you. They, um, I live over there and use that bridge a lot. And it's, it's for danger as far as pedestrians. You can't ride a bike on that pedestrian. It's so narrow. I can't even believe it's up to code because that, if you ride a bike, you could easily sort of fall into the river alley. And it's like maybe single person pedestrian. So I would like to see the department just focus on the bridge. Also, there's that spot where it's just this weird little orange fencing. I don't know, that looks just sort of horrible and mangy. But if there's something else we could do there, that'd be awesome. So why, kind of adjust your end users, what are you going to do?
Anything else? Okay, let's go on to sidewalk. So next year is not a sidewalk, um, year. I do have, uh, twenty-two fifty in hand for tree replacement. Four of the stuff we're doing this year. Um, but other than that, this is, uh, what's in here. It's actually intended to be done. And it will carry forward, that was, those are some money as well, um, carry forward to next year or following year, which will be a big project year. We do it every two years, so then we get more, um, so that you see, there are very little, we, we actually make very little money, um, and it doesn't go very far. Um, as you can see, we make less than thirty thousand a year. Um, and so that thirty thousand really doesn't go very far. It's about a half a one block, basically, right?
I, I would have to check for it. It's a little over nine hours for the, the website on the presentation.
Any questions?
Um, this seems to be a topic for different questions. I think citizens are really curious. I don't know, we're going to see like, we might like avoid this and sign up where they're being spent on paper right now. You know, it's kind of silent, it says, we're signing up dollars at work. Because people just don't know.
You're, you're right, and we've had a lot of new people move through maybe as well since that path we went into back to two thousand fourteen. And that is one of the layer aspects that's going to be included on the G I S map for S G M. Um, all the sidewalk repairs that have been made since, uh, the sidewalk fee was passed by...
As I said, it doesn't go, unfortunately, it doesn't go very far. Anything else on sidewalk? Um, the next thing is the, uh, pass-through grant. That is just, uh, budgeting for the potential rehab, uh, the potential skate park. And then there's also a grant that we're working with, um, to deal with our white rehab. Um, and that has something to do with, kind of, the cabin judgment.
An extension of the path for, like, western conservation center. We have an inner ditch and the school district, um, extensions of the path so that they can, um, mitigate for the loss of habitat providing the ditch.
And so this is just a pass-through. Um, it comes to us and then goes right back out to whoever we're sharing the grant with. So it's not actually our funds. It's just a pass-through, so that's why it's in its own little section in here. Any questions about that? Next is space to create. And right now I don't have anything budgeted, um, because we don't know where this project is going and anything will let, come in and Mary tell you more.
At this point in time, I remember saying report on this at the end of the meeting, but, uh, we have a new possible collaboration outside of the state that the state may actually be in favor of. That we are investigating and we should have another, a next meeting in a couple of weeks to see if it's going to come to fruition at all. At this point in time, there's, the state has only allocated money to call out the creative industries, are partnering this. Has only allocated money to projects that are currently in building and ours is not. So we would not have any money allocated to us anyway. So, yeah, maybe they'll, they'll help the budget money will be available to us or not if we reconfigure the project, but it's all in the air. So it doesn't seem like, it makes a lot of sense to budget anything in this regard at this point unless something miraculous happens between now and December.
They said they wouldn't be giving one of this until about twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So not next year, I think.
Right.
And there is somehow about thirteen thousand dollars reserve, um, that may or may not have to be done other term. Any questions on that?
Just want, um, that, that you don't have a reserve, um, that's a, a space to create that wouldn't impact our reserve or current anywhere else, right?
That's true.
Okay, thanks.
It is part of it. It's part of the general fund reserves, but it doesn't have any, other than the paper calculation, it doesn't have any impact on anything else. Conservation trust. So what's the, uh, round, um... This, as you can tell, over the years, get thousands around. But pretty good is just the total, seven thousand and eight five hundred. And I put it in around seventy-two hundred. Um, and that has been requested for, um, finishing up Forest Park and like, uh, potentially Viper Act at Town Park, um, with those funds, um... Any questions, Tom? Um, capital, only four of them, she's kind of capital. Um, so we are planning on finishing the projects that were budgeted for this year. Um, those will carry, what we don't do will carry over. Um, and then the new project or new money, um, are for, um, town hall, official town hall upgrades, which could and may and possibly could, um, include, um, converting the kitchen and enclosing the office upstairs. Um, we have some computers that are getting, um, off the week that we need to replace, um, that potentially, that, this is the money in here for that, um, uh, vehicle for the police department. Either the new vehicle would either go for, if pass-through happens, then that would be for the additional officer. If that doesn't pass, then it will be to replace our oldest vehicle, which was the Ford Explorer that we, that we launched in the county five years ago. Don't have five years ago. Don't we? Is that the only one that's right?
It's not.
Oh, that one's worse.
It's so terrible.
But, um, it's the one package drive. And we paid thirty-six, we paid the county thirty-six hundred dollars for it. And it's done in time, let's say. So it's time to, and we are trying to stay on a consistent rotation, um, at least with the police vehicles because they run all day, every day. So, or, you know, eight, ten hours, uh, they on their shift, what, what is that one? So that, uh, there's three thousand to replace that vehicle, um, equipment, needed equipment, and then the, um, we need another desk. And they need new chairs, like bad. Um, okay, so I didn't really realize how bad they were. I've been there and helped them work on the computer. And the material, I mean, it's like almost down to the, the material almost dropped down to the pattern. So these chairs are here for, so they're probably ten, eleven years old. Off chairs with the officers getting in and out, one with their guns and their equipment. So they need new chairs. And then we need another desk for, um, the office. So that would be our desk and chairs for the one desk and replacing all the chairs. Wow. And then, um, all the trucks on the market, anybody wants to, but they got... And, and so...
Little fish trainers, supporting the light, the trucks. Heavy, heavy duty trainers for the town hall and so forth.
Uh, asphalt, what is that?
That's for, um, like they did on over that, uh, second hand on our deck where Indian asphalt, the bunks are ready to ever start going, going down slowly.
Uh, trench walk?
That's for when we're doing water race, um, so we don't have to break them anymore.
Uh, push, uh, lawnmowers?
It's, uh, that's upgrade for commercial push lawnmowers.
The skate?
That, um, that's for one of the pickups because we, we get a forty pole, the sewer plant, they go fifty-five dollar drums. And right now we're tapping a lift to make the back of the trucks, something lifting would make it a lot handier, a lot safer, I think.
And a truck?
That is to replace the truck, the oldish truck that we have.
Okay, so his trucks are, well, the deal is old. I'm talking, someone bought, I think I bought a seventy-two, nineteen seventy-two truck. So he asked, we need to, uh, we need to start upgrading the, whatever, the vehicles for the, um, and then missing one of their equipment.
Which is what I'm asking, start saving equipment, um, for D red, um, in the rapels and stuff like that.
Is it possible to just give a little write-up on those and, um, just an explanation of why? We need that, why do we need those?
Yes.
So if I can, if I can go to the next meeting, that would be great. So it was six sixteen.
Yes.
And I know Karen asked when I'm home, Peter, Kat. She's going to be back, Karen, time for the meeting. I think we probably need to adjourn this at the moment. And we'll pick this up next week with the enterprise signs, which are probably going to take a lot of, or, yes, still.
I think there's another question, and, um, did you clarify, what are your town's policy and procedures for disposing of used equipment? How would it all work for sale in the public?
We've only done, as they all, at one time, that's, that's, that I wear, it was done via an auction. Um, the first step is that the, um, all of the items need to be listed via a resolution. The board has to pass a resolution to use them to surface. Uh, and then at that point, they can be, um, they can, can be disposed or sold. So, uh, I've, I've probably looked into other mechanisms that other communities use other than auction.
We can, we can take them to an auction or we can never, I, for sure.
But I think we're going to be fine with the president. If you get that far, then we need to have procedures to get rid of it. And we're not keeping it around and like, have a procedure to that same.
All right, well, I am going to adjourn this meeting and we will re-adjourn in thirteen, twelve minutes.
All right, well, I am going to adjourn this meeting and we will re-adjourn in, like, twelve minutes.